The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, October 9th, 2014, in the boardroom at the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the October 13th, 2014, school board agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. We are pleased to have, from Jersey Village High School this evening, Katie Main at one camera, Juan Garcia at the other camera. Back in the control room, we have Cameron Pavelowski and Alec Cluzoff. The AVP advisor is Dusty Boucher. And I would also like to bring your attention to a very special guest with us this evening. This would be a young lady who just recently won a gold medal on October 5th, leading the U.S. Women's Team to a world championship in basketball. This young lady was an All-American, all four years at Stanford University. Nekka Ogumake, would you please stand up so that we can recognize you and thank you for representing our school district, but also your alma mater of Cy Fair, Bobcats Never Die. So, let's go ahead and start with action items. And I would like to also indicate that joining us as a representative of the CLC is attorney Tom Pickford. Thank you for being here, Tom. Starting off, the very first action item, the Board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. I will read each of the contract categories and then ask if there are questions. One period, automotive lubricants. Two, coach bus service. Three, cosmetology, equipment and supplies. Four, HVAC refrigerants. Five, performance management suite. Six, print cartridges OEM remanufactured or compatible. Seven, tree trimming and removal. Eight, Walker Elementary Serving Counter food service. My colleagues, questions, comments? Cy, y'all know what you're forcing me to do. I have to ask a question if nobody else does. On item number A3, cosmetology, equipment and supplies, when I did the walkthrough this week at Cypress Lakes High School, I noticed that they had state-of-the-industry equipment, which is in keeping with the district philosophy, that you have to prepare students for jobs that currently exist and to do so you must use state-of-the-industry approaches. The question that I have, and this would either be for Matt, since you're in charge of contracts, or perhaps Dr. Macias, depends who wants to be on the hot seat. Does this contract cover all 11 high schools, one? Secondly, does this permit our students to obtain either a certificate or a license? Is there anything, if it's a certificate or licensure program, is there anything remarkable about doing it while you're in high school as opposed to post-graduation? And do we have these facilities available at each of our high schools, or is it merely only at the newer high schools?
Mr. Jackson, the cosmetology program is at every single high school. And we have quite an exceptional quality program that we offer at each high school. And it does lead itself to a license. And typically, our students, they take their tests in the spring of their senior year and are able to earn their license. And the one thing that's quite interesting is that if our students take the exam and earn their license while they're still in high school, the requirement is 1,000 contact hours. But if they wait until after high school or through another program, then it requires 1,500 hours.
Excellent, thank you. Good information. This is already on the consensus agenda. Let's go now to item B. The Board will consider approving and submitting to the Commissioner of Education a request for maximum class-size waiver. There's no presentation. Questions from the Board?
Just one. Is this something new that we haven't had to do before? I'll respond. No, we do it every year, when there are classes that are over 22 to 1. Last year, we requested for 17 campuses, and this year, we have a reduction, 16 campuses. And all of those campuses met standards. Great. Oh, yeah, that's what, I thought it was something we've done pretty much every year for a while. So, just wanted to confirm. Thanks.
Just as a side note, back during the budget crunch, there were many, many more waivers that we had asked for, but now, we have very few.
C period, the Board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. Once again, no presentation, questions only. This has two parts to it. One is educational philosophy, which is revision. And then there is employment objectives, objective criteria for personnel decisions. Questions from my colleagues. With the approval of the Board, I would ask, since we don't have all the Board members here, that we consider moving this and leave it as an action item to talk about on Monday, because there are some new items that we're adding in here. And I would like for the entire Board to at least be present and be able to ask questions if anybody would like to do so.
That's fine, but any Board member, even on Monday, could remove something and if they wanted to discuss something, but whatever the pleasure is.
Well, and Dr. Ogumake, you're entirely correct, merely because we're taking no action tonight. I guess more than anything else, I just wanted to make a note that this may be, may or may not be something that other Board members might want to comment on. Item D, the Board will consider canceling the special called Board Meeting Boundary Workshop on October 27th, 2014. Any questions?
No.
The Board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks We do have one exceptionally large refund. I've already covered that offline and received a very satisfactory answer. Item F, the Board will consider approving the minutes of September 15th, 2014, regular meeting. I imagine that one's pretty straightforward. Now, let's move to the non-consensus items. Item A, the Board will consider approving the 84th Legislative Session priorities developed by the Community Leadership Committee. And this is a presentation. We will have both Teresa Hall, but also Tom Pickford. Tom, if you want to use the microphone over here to your left and our right.
Actually, Mr. Jackson, I'm going to allow Mr. Pickford, as the chairman of our Community Leadership Group, to provide the presentation for you this evening. We are seeking your approval of the recommendation by the CLC of the 84th Legislative Session priorities. We've worked with the, the district administration has actually worked with the committee over the last several months on many of these topics. They've been divided into individual study groups, you know, learning and researching those individual issues and the impact on Cypress Fairbanks and on public education, and so have priorities established in those areas that they would like to present to you this evening. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pickford.
Good evening. Mr. Jackson, esteemed Board members, it's good to see you all again. Do I have a time limit?
You do not have a time limit.
Little bit of an inside joke from the last time. I am very proud to be the chairman of the Community Leadership Committee. This was a committee that was formed before my time and has sustained itself. And I think the reason the committee continues to contribute is because it has shown itself to be of value to the school district, and more importantly, to the citizens of our district. So, I am here in a representative capacity only. What I'd like to do is, first of all, thank all of the members of the CLC. I'm not going to name them individually, but it was funny, I had Chuck is here, Chuck Brandman is here, and he's the Vice Chairman-Secretary, I'm not even sure what his formal title is, but he printed out a list of all of our members, and we are quite a substantial committee now. And I would read this to you, but the print is so small that in my advanced years, I just can't go there. Let me go through quickly the process. We, this year, and we did it a little bit different, we divided up into areas. And the areas were accountability and assessment, transparency, finance, school choice, and charters. And we worked smaller groups of members to become more knowledgeable about those specific areas so that they could come up with recommendations for potential positions regarding possible legislation in the Texas Legislature, and just any other potential areas of concern. So, we did this, and we did it over time, and we worked over the summer. A lot of the groups communicated by email and debated by email, and information was provided, detailed information. The administrators who assisted the committee members were fantastic. Linda was in charge of a committee. Stuart was in charge of finance and transparency. Roy was involved, Teresa was involved, and Dr. Henry just tried to make sure everybody stayed out of trouble. But they were fantastic, and they were a great resource for our committee members. And each subsection came up last Monday at our meeting, and they presented their proposed legislative priorities. And, you know, again, I'm just kind of orchestrating things as they go on. For accountability and assessment, Allison James made a presentation, and it was, you know, just fantastic. And transparency, Fred Benson, Fred got double duty. He had transparency and finance. And one of the things that we did was, we actually combined those two small groups. And the reason we combined transparency with finance is, it appeared to us that any issues really, that we could foresee involving transparency would involve financial disclosures of some sort or another. So, we combined those two groups, and Fred handled the presentation on that. And then on school choice and charters, Michael Kreider and Julie Heinemann, and I may be pronouncing their names badly, and I apologize, but, I mean, they were just, they were fantastic. And they made a presentation. We put up the priorities on the Board, and everybody had a hard copy, and there was some fantastic discussion, and there were modifications made by the committee. And in the end, and I believe you all have a hard copy of our proposal, this is what the committee, basically without objection, right Chuck? There was 100% consensus. We didn't have them raise their hands and give five, four, or three, it was just, there were no objections. That's also an inside joke. And this is what we came up with. So, in that regard, you all have these in front of you, I think there's not going to be any surprises here to you. School finance, we're still fighting for, we're fighting for appropriate financial contribution from the state of Texas. We all recognize that the school finance litigation is still ongoing. There's an appeal of the trial court judge's judgment saying that the way Texas is financing schools is unconstitutional. So, that's still going. But in the meantime, you guys got to run a school, or you guys got to oversee the running of a school, and Dr. Henry and his staff have got to run it. And in that regard, we still need to lobby the state legislature to properly and adequately fund public education. And to, and I'm going to use the word fairly, particularly with regard to Cy Fair Independent School District, because we've been on the short end of the per-student allotment by the state of Texas for a long time. And even though they close that gap a little bit, that gap is still there. And we need to continue to fight for equity and fairness in the way the state divvies up the funds for public education. So, I think you'll see that in the overall mandate on school finance. Now, there's a couple of things that Stuart pointed out to us, and that we think, we just cannot understand why our legislators would support two of these things. And one is to increase the funding formula for the existing debt allotment, and also support reinstatement of the new instructional facilities allotment. We're a fast-growth district. You guys, I'm not telling you something you don't already know. We're building schools, you know, left and right because we have to. That's the nature of educating 113,000 students. And those two particular items really hone in and help fast-growth school districts. And Stuart, you correct me if I'm wrong, okay, because I may get the two switched around, but the existing debt allotment actually, the way that was originally formulated would provide local property tax relief on the INS, on the INS rate, because it's money sent to our district or any other district that qualifies to help pay down bond indebtedness for new construction for those schools. It would, it's a win-win, and our legislators should adopt it, and we want to promote that because not only are they going to help public education, help Cy Fair and a lot of other school districts, they're going to help local property, they're going to help our taxpayers by helping to relieve some of that property tax debt. So, we want to support that. It's in existence, but they haven't modified the formula. And so, what has happened over time is, the state's contribution has reduced to almost nothing, and the number of school districts that qualify have, in fact, Cy Fair doesn't qualify anymore, I don't believe, has reduced to virtually nothing since they instituted the program. We need them to redo the formula so that Cy Fair and other fast-growth school districts can get some property tax relief and get help building these schools. The second item, and I'm probably going to spend more time on school finance, because I was actually in that group and I wasn't in the other groups, but on the new instructional facilities allotment, that was a program that would help schools, districts open new schools. It provided additional funds per ADA of students in the new school to the school district so that you guys could, you know, help take a little bit of the edge off of that first year operating cost. Now, that doesn't go to INS, that goes to M&amp;O, but it still, it may not provide immediate taxpayer relief, but it certainly wouldn't hurt. And it will help fast-growth school districts like Cy Fair open all these new schools that we have to open. It's a win-win. Our legislators, Democrat, Republican, Independent, whomever, they should support those items, and that's why we want to promote that to the Texas Legislature. So, that's under school finance, obviously. The unfunded mandates in HB5, and I wish I could give you a list of them, but I'm positive they're there. You know, come on, guys. You're going to mandate school districts to do certain things, then you need to give us the funds to do them, okay? The one little thing that comes to my mind is the fact that, and hopefully it's going to be fixed, the attachment of the endorsements and stuff to the diplomas, okay? Well, guess what? It can't be done on graduation day. So, we end up having to mail the diplomas. The postage cost doesn't seem like a lot unless you have, how many graduating seniors, Dr. Henry?
7,447.
It's a little deal, but it's an unfunded mandate. And there's other things in HB5 that are probably significantly more important, but they should fund those for us before they mandate them. So, item number two, school choice. There's already school choice. There's an existing law that allows school districts to create charter schools or some semblance of charter schools. And to my knowledge, Dr. Henry, and you can correct me, it really hasn't been utilized yet. Nobody's really tried that yet. And suddenly, we hear word that instead of going at route, legislators want to expand private charters and potentially vouchers to private schools. Well, guys, if they're going to divert resources from public schools which have accountability standards and transparency standards, to show the taxpayer what's happening to their tax dollar and how big a bang they're getting through their butt. If they're going to divert those resources, it's just to private entities that have no transparency, have no accountability, that's not right. We're not going to support it. We're going to oppose it. Our public schools have been fighting to get their funding back, fighting too hard to give it away to a privatization effort of schools in Texas. We're going to, we think that it should be opposed, and we would like to oppose it, and that's what item number two is all about. Item number three, transparency. There's already enough transparency in our public school districts. There's the Open Meetings Act, there's the Open Records Act. We don't need to burden our school districts, again, with more requirements that are going to do nothing but raise administrative costs and not provide meaningful information to the general public. So, that is what, that's where we're at on transparency. We suspect that there are those out there that want to add significant amount of explanatory language to ballot provisions, which are not going to help the voter, they're not going to promote the cause, when we already have requirements that, for example, on a bond issue, that require us to post an enormous amount of information that's available to the general public already, and anyone who wants to know it can get to it and access it very easily. We don't need to create confusion at the ballot box by adding a bunch of unnecessary and redundant language. And we're going to oppose, we think, and I say "we're" going to oppose, we think it should be opposed, and we hope you all adopt these priorities. Accountability and assessment, pretty simple, nothing really that doesn't make sense or is very difficult to understand. The A through F grading system is just silly. We all know what an A is, and we all know what an F is, but what does a B, what's a C, what's a D mean if you give a district one? I mean, we already had a system of exemplary recognized, acceptable, and unacceptable that everybody understood. We should go back to that system, and we should make sure that campuses are not, my understanding is, districts are now on an A through F, campuses are now, are still recognized, but we fear, or there is some fear, that there'll be a movement that campuses be rated on an A through F. We think that's unnecessary, and it's only going to confuse the Texas public, who already understands something that's been in existence for a long time. So, the second item, probably more important, reduce the amount of tests in the accountability system at the elementary school level. They actually passed a law in the state of Texas the last time around to do that. It made sense, it was smart, and the federal government said, "No, we're not going to accept your waiver under," I believe it was "No Child Left Behind." I don't even want to get into that. But we understand that there's a movement in Congress to also try to reduce testing. We would support that movement, but we're more, our entity, the CLC, is more oriented toward the state legislature, and so that's where we're at. Last of all, just a very simple thing. We want to align college-state, Texas State College requirements for entrance with the diploma requirements that I believe HB5 created. Right now, they're not Right now, they're not lined up. The college entrance requirements, basically in law or by regulation, line up with the old system before HB5. Well, come on, guys, common sense. Make them line up, so that somebody who gets a diploma from a Texas high school can, isn't necessarily excluded, but would automatically qualify to at least apply to a Texas State College or University. Right now, there's not necessarily a problem with students applying out-of-state, out-of-state requirements are in some cases more flexible. Well, we need to make sure all of our students can go to a state college or university if they get a diploma and they earn that right. And so that's what we're all about. Okay. So, we would like the board to consider, and I believe it would be at your next regular board meeting, to adopt these legislative session priorities.
Are there any questions, comments? Mr. Koby?
More of a comment, Tom, and I just, you know, I've sat in on a couple of your meetings, and I'm very impressed with the interplay that you have with everybody and the interest that you've got, and it's wonderful to sit back there and listen to what you're doing. So I'm very proud of the CLC and for coming up with this. And I just was going to reinforce you and let you know that we just had our state Texas Association of School Board meeting, and the advocacy agenda that we adopted, this pretty much falls right into it. There's maybe a little bit more detail, but everything that you have here is basically what they're saying for the entire state. So y'all did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I would say this, I mean, we, there were times where we were very detailed, and we felt like we needed to make sure we had some flexibility in promoting things, because we don't know what bills are going to be submitted yet to the Texas Legislature. So we just felt like, well, let's not get too bogged down in specifics, let's make sure that we cover the broad picture, and that's what we did, I think. Any other questions?
You know me, Tom. You know, this is almost like a contest where I have to match you word for word. I'm sure for my colleagues, I can't wait for, until Don gets back soon enough. When my health returned, I attended every one of your meetings, and I can say that you and your group are both deliberate, thoughtful, and open-minded. I trust the process implicitly. But I still have some questions nonetheless. I attended the Fast Growth Coalition luncheon. I was privileged to do so up in Dallas. They had a most intriguing video, heard some very interesting statistics. I also heard Representative Hopeful Mr. Schofield address the Chamber Summit Committee and indicated favoring reinstatement of the new instructional facilities allotment. And certainly, we've all heard Representative Fletcher and Representative Harless make similar comments. My question for you, based upon history, what might the potential impact for Cyfair be if the NIFA was reinstated? And you may not have your notes with you, so that's a bit of an unfair question.
No, no. I actually have some notes. I can't give you a total dollar figure, Mr. Jackson, because it would be dependent on a couple of things. Number one, how much money per ADA they're going to reinstate into that fund, per student? And then the question would be, what new schools are opening up, when they open up, and how many kids? So it's a simple deal. You get, you get one year of additional, in the past, it would have been $250 ADA. You get that for one year's operation of a brand-new school. Multiply the $250, times the number of students in that brand-new school, this district would get that additional funding from the state, which would help the district and would help the taxpayers who fund the district here at Cyfair.
Can I jump in and help with that question?
Please do so.
As Tom mentioned, it's a program that helps fast-growth school districts, and the $250 per ADA, as it was established by the legislature, was a two-year program. In other words, the district received on an ADA basis the number of students that would attend a brand-new school in the first year, and then in the second year would receive the $250 per ADA for the incremental increase in the number of students. So, to, to give you, put that in a little bit of perspective, for an elementary school, say, with an enrollment of 950 students in the first year, generally, the ADA is about 96% of those students, so about $225,000, $230,000 in the first year. And then if they, say they added another 50 students in the second year, it would be another, say, $12,000 for that school. So you're looking at, you know, $240,000, $250,000 for an elementary school. For a high school, designed for 3,500 students, say, 3,000 in the first year, generally, the high school has a little bit lower attendance rate of 94%. So, well over $700,000 in the first year. And if that school had an income rental increase of another 500 students in that second year, then it would be another, you know, $117,000, $118,000. So, over a two-year period, well over $800,000 for that high school. Obviously, if we're opening multiple schools in a particular year, then that, this amount adds up very quickly. And it does pay for the operating, the initial operating startup cost for those schools. One other thing is that this program has not been funded, it's still in law, but it has not been funded in the last, the past two bienniums, state bienniums.
So the mechanism is in place as long as the money is available?
Correct.
And we've heard from various representatives that the money is available. I would also note and say thank you to Dr. Henry, because he is active in the Fast Growth Coalition. And that's important leadership to have for the district, because these are not inconsequential sums that we're talking about. In your second category of school choice, as you pointed out, we do have school choice within our district boundaries. Parents are able to choose between Cyfair charter schools and private schools. Do you have any statistics that might compare the effectiveness and financial integrity of these alternative systems on a state level? And once again, that's an unfair question, but I'm known for asking unfair questions.
It's, no, it's not an unfair question. And again, I would go back, and I have to give Michael Kreider and Julie Heinemann credit, and those who assisted them, because they did present statistics to us comparing the effectiveness in the state of Texas. Let me, and excuse me for reading from these notes, but I just want to make sure that I get this correct. For the school year 2012, 2013, 92.6% of the public schools achieved an academic rating of met standard. The percentage of charter schools in Texas earning that same rating was only 81.8%. So the public schools are meeting standard at a higher percentage than the charter schools. And that's an academic measure. Let's go to financial integrity rating, which this school district is famous for, because we are the most efficient school district in the entire state of Texas. For school year 2012 and 2013, 89% of the independent school districts ranked superior, and only 1.2% ranked substandard on a financial integrity rating, which I believe is the rating, the fast rating by the comptroller. Looking at charter schools, only 37%, let me make sure, yeah, 89% of school districts were superior, public school districts. Only 37% of charter schools ranked superior. Now, okay, so maybe they're all average. Well, only 1% of ISDs were substandard. 20% of charter schools were substandard on a financial integrity rating. You know, there's, there's an awful lot of spin out there, where people are saying, "Charter are the panacea, charters are the way to go." There are some good charter schools out there. We recognize that, you have to recognize that. But charters are not the panacea. And in my viewpoint, and in the committee's viewpoint, it is inappropriate to divert resources from our public schools, which are doing the job they're supposed to do, and give it to private entities with little or no transparency, little or no accountability. So that's, that's why, that's our position on that, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Those are fairly stark statistics you quoted, and I think it makes sense to bear those in mind. In closing, once again, thank you to you, as well as your entire committee. This is a significant contribution of volunteer hours, certainly. I'm appreciative of management doing some of the heavy lifting and providing you with information and bringing things up to date, but I'm also well aware that you have very active committee members who routinely check up on what's going on in Austin, and then bringing that information back to the committee, one of whom is here tonight, but there's several who've been quite active in that arena who are not here tonight. So I would like to say thanks to them. Other comments or questions, colleagues? Mr. Pickford, thank you ever so much.
Could I say just one?
By all means.
One item. We lost a committee member, or he's going to become inactive. I think you all know Craig Sharp. And my goodness, that man has done miracles and was always very active in the CLC and other volunteer work in the district, and I want to congratulate him. I think he's, he got a new job, and it's going to keep him too busy, but he's going to be missed. Theresa, we got to find, we got to find another CLC member out there, so maybe somebody in the audience can volunteer, but we'll see. Thank you all so very much, and good luck going forward.
Thank you. Next item to look at, and we'll go through all of the non-consent and then come back to talk about moving them all over. Item B, which is the board will consider the 2014 tax rate resolution to support the 2014, 2015 maintenance and operations and debt service budgets by setting the 2014 M&amp;O and INS tax rates. I understand that presentation will be given on Monday night, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. C-period, the board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. There is no presentation, this has four different items. Number one, CPC, Local Office Management Records Management Revised. Two-period, DIA, Local Employee Welfare Freedom from Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation Revised. Three-period, DNA, Local Performance Appraisal and Evaluation of Teachers Revised. Four-period, FD, Local Admissions Revised. Questions or comments? We do have item D. The board will consider approving the Centerpoint Energy Houston Electric LLC Blanket Utility Easement to provide electrical service for Woodard Elementary School, which is number 54. Now, we may, if any member of the board wishes, or if Dr. Henry wishes, we can discuss this in closed session pursuant to Section 551.071. In Section 551.072, there was considerable information in the board packet. Does anybody wish to discuss this in closed session?
If the board doesn't want to, we feel like it's routine. We would, though, Mr. Chairman, recommend that maybe A and B not go to consensus for Monday night, maybe just take, that's just.
Very good.
C and D maybe.
I was going to say that.
So let's go ahead and move items C and D to the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, and also Donna, if you have that noted. Next, we have the superintendent's briefing, and of course, that will be covered on Monday as well. That concludes the matter for this evening. Unless there is anything else to be brought forward, but we have covered everything on the agenda. We are hereby adjourned.
Go Texans.